That was gonna be, that would be the one.
Yeah. Good evening. Welcome to Elkhorn County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, November the fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. After a moment of silence, we're gonna ask Chuck Horton to lead us in the pledge. Please stand. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion in second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is statements and remarks from citizens. If this is anything not on tonight's agenda. Statements and remarks from commissioners. We want to announce that the Parks and Rec and Kipoe County, County Beautiful Commission uh is having a volunteer day for taking out invasive species from Heritage Park. We got some dates coming up on November the nineteenth. If you've got some time that day, you want to go out to the park and help get rid of these invasive species plants, please join us. Our next item is the approval of minutes. This is for October first, October eighth, and October twenty-ninth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as distributed.
Okay. Yeah, we have a motion in second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is discussing consideration of resolution approving the contract with the Upper Elkhorn Water Basin Authority. Daniel?
We have Jim Woodward, bond counsel with us tonight. Jim's gonna present this and uh we'll all jointly try and address any questions there are.
All right, thank you. Again, Jim Woodward, a law firm, Gray Pennone Woodward. I'm here in Athens, Georgia, on the bond counsel for this transaction. Uh, this is the expansion of the Bear Creek Water Treatment Plant. Uh, it's gonna be twenty-one million gallon per day expansion. Uh, and basically these, uh, what was approved by the authority at this meeting on October twenty-third was a a bond transaction up to a hundred and forty million dollars. It's been broken out into two tranches. Uh, but basically it'll be secured by the revenues of the authority um for this project, but also from three contracts. Uh, one with each between authority, uh, one with the Coney, one with Barrow, uh, and one with Jackson. And so uh, um, basically on the process, we're having all the counties approve uh their resolutions this week and next week. Uh, we can go out to market uh on November twentieth, lock in the rates, and we'll be looking to close sometime in December. Uh, so this resolution basically approves uh the contract between you guys and the authority. Uh, but also we need to add uh that we'll need to extend the reservoir contract, which has been in place since nineteen ninety-six. And also uh, amend uh, um, the uh, water treatment contract as well.
You need a motion to approve all those things.
That's right, exactly.
Do we have any questions from commissioners on that? Do we have any public comment on this item? To entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, we approve it as stated.
Yeah, motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is discuss the, discuss updates to the alcohol ordinance. Everybody received a copy of Daniel's ordinance. We've been through it uh on administrative side, there's just a few things. Add some definitions and change some words that we found. I guess one of the big question is related to the theaters and how the we would like to kinda, there's consensus on how to move toward that. Plus, anything else you may have found as you've been through it. You got any questions or comments? Go through that, man.
But one thing I'll add is that over the next couple of weeks, I'm gonna go through and simplify, I hope, some of the um provisions of the ordinance. I, you know, things tend to get more complicated over time, and I think some of the, some of the provisions about standards for licenses and uh the rules and regulations can be consolidated a little bit, make the planning department's job a little bit easier.
Mr. Chairman, will this draft be posted on our website for citizens to be able to access it?
Yes, after he makes those adjustments that we talked about tonight, they'll be, it'll be posted.
In my understanding, the first official reading will be at our November Agenda Setting Meeting.
That's correct.
And we should, what's the date on that again, that Agenda Setting Date? But I know Thanksgiving gets in there.
Put up the date.
Well, that's
Be the twenty-sixth.
November twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Okay.
We vote on December third, and we'll run advertisements in on the website, social media, and also through the paper.
All right, so we'll have the first reading at our November Agenda, and second reading at our regular December meeting.
Correct.
Okay, so if there's any public comment, there's still time for that.
Okay.
And it does include the uh expansion of the service area to include the shops on Malcolm Bridge.
If that map's been updated, it will be part of that.
Okay.
Sketch. Any other comments or questions?
One thing we might clarify too is that the intent would be any new licenses or any renewal license we processed under the new ordinance. So it's a little, you know, if y'all elected not make any changes, guys gotta jump around a little bit differently, but assuming the board um adopts the change, the, the new ordinance would govern the license.
Sounds good. And then we'll move on to our hearings and actions on zoning matters. Our process here tonight for the rezones and other matters is to, the rezon petition shall be presented by the county staff with no time limit. The applicant and those signing up to speak for the petition shall be allowed a total of twenty minutes. That's the applicant's reserve for rebuttal. Those signing up to speak against the petition shall also be allowed a total of twenty minutes. After that, the public comments will be closed. The board should have an opportunity to ask questions as they see fit. And then the board should take action as defined in the Unified Development Code. With that, we'll call our first hearing, which is rezon request P twenty-four dash zero one one six Sapphire Property Rentals LLC. The request to rezon from AG to R one seventeen point three eight seven acres at twenty-eight eighty Monroe Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Again, this is rezon P twenty-four zero one one six Sapphire Property Rentals LLC. So this, this is for parcel B zero two zero two five along Monroe Highway, Highway seventy-eight. It's currently zoned AG in the suburban neighborhood character area. And the request is to rezon the seventeen point three eight seven acre tract from AG to R one. This is the recorded plat, the concept plan that you have in your application packet, going the eight lots. Uh, architectural rendering submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. Number four, all dwelling units shall have facades consistent with architectural features shown on submitted drawing RS zero six zero one two zero with primarily brick, stone, or lap siding consisting of painted wood lap or fiber cement board siding. No vinyl or metal siding shall be allowed. Each single family detached unit shall include at least a two-car garage. Number five, architectural elevation shall be approved by the plant director with no house models having the same facade adjacent to each other, so as not to be repetitive. Number six, each new dwelling shall install two street trees, a minimum of two-inch caliper at the time of planting prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Number seven, after sidewalk, driveway, and house are constructed on each lot, all remaining disturbed areas on each lot shall be sotted prior to CO. The disturbed area within the right-of-way shall be sotted if a stand of permanent grass is not established prior to final plat. The planning commission recommended approval with the same conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Scott?
I was just gonna speak for if
Okay.
there was anybody that had, uh, any questions.
All right.
But
Thank you.
I don't really have anything to add right now, unless you guys have questions.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk?
Good evening, Chairman and Board. My name's Adam Kirk. I'm the landscape architect on the project. Um, I believe Guy did a decent job of representing the project. It's eight lots, there's two existing homes that'll remain. Um, they'll become new lots on their own, and then six additional lots.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion and open up to questions from commissioners. No questions, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve rezon P twenty-four zero one one six Sapphire Property Rentals LLC. Request to rezon from AG to R one seventeen point three eight seven acres, twenty-eight eighty Monroe Highway with the seven conditions.
Okay. Okay, with a motion in second to approve rezon request P twenty-four dash zero one one six with seven conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is special use P twenty-four dash zero one five five Christopher Terrell. This is a request to modify conditions of a previous special use approval, which was case number twenty-six thirty-six. This is for sixteen point two six seven acres at sixteen hundred Black Ike Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Again, this is special use P twenty-four zero one five five Chris Terrell, applicant owner. This is parcel B one two zero one eight C located, located on Black Ike Road. It's currently zoned AG in the agricultural preservation character area. And the applicant is requesting to remove the seven conditions of conditional use twenty-six twenty-three to allow the creation of two lots on an unpaved road, Black Ike Road, as permitted by right in the UDC. The conditions are in your application packet, uh, slightly clearer version. This is the recorded plat as well as the concept plan uh showing the two tracks proposed. Again, concept plan with contours. And staff recommends approval uh with our two standard conditions. The planning commission also recommended approval with the same conditions. Thank you.
Christopher Terrell?
Good evening, Judge. I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Yep, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the special use? Does anyone wish to speak against? Go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners? Entertain a motion.
I've got one for Mr. Herron, excuse me. Just for clarification, on this track, it doesn't show on what, what you presented, but isn't there a larger portion of this tracking actually in Green County?
Yes, sir, that, that is in the concept plan.
Okay. So uh, so can Green County do what they want to if he asks for subdivision of that track?
We, we don't have any jurisdiction on that side.
That's why I said, Green County can do what, but the only access to that track is through Black, Black Ike. Is that correct?
I, I'm not aware of any other access, but there may be, I do not know.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Or entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve P twenty-four dash zero one five five as stated, with the conditions.
Okay. Motion in second to approve special use P twenty-four dash zero one five five with two conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries. Next item is special use P twenty-four dash zero one six six Charles Hillsman and Jane Hillsman requesting a special use approval for an accessory modular farm tenant dwelling. Thirty-two point six six five acres. This is at twenty-seven ninety-one Oliver Bridge Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Again, this is special use P twenty-four zero one six six Charles and Jane Hillsman, applicant owners. This is parcel C zero seven zero three three off of Oliver Bridge Road. It's currently zoned AG in the agricultural preservation character area. And again, the special use permit request is to allow a manufactured home to be placed on a lot as an accessory farm tenant dwelling. This is the recorded plat in your application packet. This is a location in the concept plan uh of the proposed structure. This is the, uh, pictures of the proposed structure as well as the architectural renderings of the carport uh that would be adjacent to it. And staff recommends conditional approval uh with our one standard condition. The planning commission also recommended approval with the same condition. Thank you.
Abe?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Abe Abou Hamdan. Uh, our address is twenty-four ten Hog Mountain Road, Suite one oh three Watkinsville. Thank you for having us here this evening. Uh, I believe this, this request is straightforward. Mr. Hillsman and Mrs. Hillsman, both of them are here with their daughter. Um, their daughter wishes to, to be of help uh on the farm, as you, you know, any size farm, uh, even five and up acres, it takes a lot of work, a lot of help, and she's wishing to help them, and uh they would like to place this manufactured home on the property. It is being moved from Bishop locally. Uh, it is uh of age, two thousand thirteen, I believe, manufactured. Uh, it will be uh improved by adding a front porch and a back deck as well as a uh garage structure, uh carport structure next to it. Um, if you could, there's a site down here. So I'd like to point a few things and uh so the structure's located here, but that's roughly right there. So that's about nine hundred and fifty feet, over nine hundred fifty feet away from uh the public roadway. And obviously, there's a nice growth of trees we'd like to maintain here. Uh, we've gone ahead and, and tested for the septic viability. We did a level three soil survey, and that's been done in this area. And obviously, on, on this kind of acreage, uh, there was plenty of usable soils for the septic. We wanted to make sure what we present uh is gonna work uh for the septic. Uh, there is a well on site right about here, and that's what will be utilized for the water service for the building. So um, they're just like, uh, the Hillsman would like to have their daughter close by to help again with, with the farm uh help and hopefully um become a farmer one day, if so. Um, with that, would like to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners?
Does anyone else wish to speak for the special use? Anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments. Any questions from commissioners? Entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve special use P twenty-four zero one six six Charles R. Hillsman and Jane, Jay Hillsman. Requesting special use approval for the accessory modular farm tenant dwelling, thirty-two point six six five acres, twenty-seven ninety-one Oliver Bridge Road, agriculture residential with the one condition.
There were a motion second to approve special use P twenty-four dash zero one six six with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is rezon request P twenty-three dash zero two eight seven. This is Kristen and Philip Gibson. Request to modify conditions of a previous rezon, which was P twenty dash zero one four three, two point four eight acres at ten thirty Garrett Road. This is a continuation of a previous hearing that we've already had, so Mr. Porter, if you have anything to add from our last sound?
Good evening, uh, Stan Porter, address is seventy-three Church Street, Wondor, Georgia. I'm again not gonna go through everything, and I always spend a lot of time a month ago talking about this. Um, it was tabled so we could explore uh the possibility of adding uh an additional driveway. Remember, this is off Highway fifty-three and Garrett Road. Um, the Gibson's driveway now is off Garrett Road. It's at the far, their current driveway is the furthest away it could be from Highway fifty-three. It's at that sort of other border, other end of their property. Um, the location on, on potentially exploring where to put that would be closer to Highway fifty-three. Um, it's where the power poles are, so um we actually had Walton MC come out. Uh, they can't confirm that you would even be able to move those power poles. You'd need to do that to put where the driveway was gonna be. Um, that, the, the factor there and, and what they said was really, it depends on, they gotta have a place to put them and what other underground utilities are in the area. They didn't go through the process of locating that, but if, assuming that you could put them somewhere else there, um, they quoted a cost of six thousand, there's four, uh, six thousand per pole, there's four poles that would have to be moved. Uh, we also uh got a quote from a grader on installing uh a new driveway, just a gravel crusher-run driveway. Um, it's over five hundred feet from Garrett Road uh going in essentially the straightest line possible back to um along fifty-three and then curving over to uh the, the guest house. Um, it was forty thousand dollars for the grading and the crusher run. That doesn't include, um, there's a fence that had to be relocated, some landscaping that'd have to be moved too, that, that's already there in place. I also talked with an engineer about the possibility in sort of a, a safety concern that we had in putting the driveway there is what would it be like if you are trying to turn out of that driveway? You're not gonna have much space on Garrett Road before you then get to fifty-three, and so um there may be questions about um whether you could even from a, a sort of sightline or, or safety even have that driveway. So um, I, I don't think that that other driveway is an option. Um, i- i- if it was an option, it, it's quite an expensive one compared to uh the existing drive that's already there. Essentially, if you approve this um, our, our request to, to change the zoning condition and allow the use of what's there, it's ready to go uh because it's been this drive for a, as far as we know, the history of the property. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about that other possibility of, of drive.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners on this item?
Good. Guy, could you pull up, or somebody pull up the conditions? Do you still have that? It came from you, your staff?
You want the original ones?
Usually when you, did you have any conditions?
Uh, we recommend denial.
I know that, but usually you give us an option if we
I don't, you would just be removing that one condition.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
So we're not voting on this side setback right now, we're just
No, that, that's contingent upon
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. That's right, this is uh just on the one foot no access along State Route fifty-three.
We asked a question.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't know this as much of a question as maybe a statement. You know, I went out to look at the property myself. And uh, it's a beautiful piece of property. Um, and I understand, you know, what Mr. Herron's saying, however, this one to me is a good bit different. I don't, I don't think I've seen one quite like this, but you know, in, in all fairness to these folks, uh, I do believe that the county's got some culpability in this with the fact that the property appraisal folks saw a wrong occurring, but failed to act and tell Mr. Herron's office to, to go, allow them to go deal with it. These folks buy the property, and I believe they've been paying taxes. So I, I, I think to put them in a position where they can't get to the, to this house. I understand the, the possibility about the rentals or something like that, but I just uh I think this is one where you got some innocent citizens of the county. Uh, and if we turn them down, I really think us, they're just getting another beating. Kinda can guess where I'm going.
That access is still available. Access is still available through the existing driveway is my concern about leaving the one on fifty-three.
Well, you know, I would be the first one if it belonged to the county. I think we kind of established, you know, some questioning the last time is that's a state. They gave the permission and they didn't take it back. And and so then you got the this house. And I don't think, I mean, putting the burden on them to go and if they could get the poles removed, I mean, you're talking about a lot of money out of pocket for these people who didn't do anything wrong except buy the house. And probably had property appraisal have told the code enforcement, they would have never gotten themselves in that in the first place. Chairman, I, as y'all recall, my line of questions and comments last month was to establish the point that, you know, there were some people y'all were dealing with that wasn't quite upfront with y'all. And I was prepared last month to grant your request, but and defer to see if there was a different option. I appreciate you allowing us to to ask you of that. Appreciate you taking that time. So I do hope that you're successful in going after this seller, because that's and this is a lesson to all of y'all that if you buying something, you better know what you're buying. And unfortunately, they had people who were giving them not all the right information. So I just think that we've we've realized there's some, maybe some internal things we need to do so this wouldn't happen again to anyone else as far as the restriction on the driveway. I think it would have been better if we had reproved that, that we had that culvert pulled out. So if y'all drove up, y'all would not have seen that driveway there. So, so that's all I just have to say about that.
No other questions? We'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve. I'm getting my glass effect. Or getting old. E two three dash zero two eight seven Kristen and Philip Gibson, request to modify conditions of a previous rezon. E twenty dash zero one four three, two point four eight acres, ten thirty Garrett Road Residential.
Second. There were motion and second to approve rezon P twenty-three dash zero two eight seven. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That'll lead us to variance request P twenty-three dash zero two eight eight. Philip and Kristen and Philip Gibson, this is request to reduce the minimum required setback, ten thirty Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is variance P twenty-three zero two eight eight Kristen and Philip Gibson, applicant owner. Again, this is parcel A zero one zero seven six B A. It's currently zoned A.R. in the suburban neighborhood character area. And again, the property owners request a setback variance from fifteen feet to twelve and a half feet to construct a carport adjacent to an unpermitted residential structure. You have the recorded plat, the concept plan in your application packet, and zoomed-in portion showing the encroachment proposed by the carport. And staff, based on the standards and limitations for special exception variance approval, this request does not meet all the necessary conditions to grant special exception as the hardship is created by the property owner with the construction of an unpermitted structure. Staff recommends denial of the request as there does not appear to be a hardship and the applicant did not indicate why a carport cannot be placed on the south side of the unpermitted structure. Thank you.
Mr. Porter?
Evening again. So this, I I mentioned this last month when we were here. This is certainly the this, the least of our requests that we were bringing coming, the the last one, certainly appreciate your vote on the last one was was most important. If you remember the Gibsons, this is, they intend to finish out this property for Ms. Gibson's mother-in-law, Mr. Gibson's mom, to move in there. And I I want to be clear, before they do any building on our carport, they fully understand that this, the the structure that's there is unfinished. There's not electricity or water to it. It's built on the outside. The inside's still just unfinished, roughed in. And so they're fully aware, and we intend to go after the seller, agents, anybody that we can for some potential fraud in in the transaction and some misleading information that was given. But they understand they're going to have to get this thing permitted, pay some penalties for that, get it inspected by engineer to make sure that that it meets all code. They would like to, I mean, just practically would like that her her mother-in-law have a little carport. The location, we can't move the building, the location of where it is, and and the width that you would need to put a carport on means that we need this very small setback variance. This is the very back corner of their property. It doesn't, it's not going to have any adverse effect on on neighbors. You're not going to even notice that this encroachment is there. And the reason that the the carport needs to go on that side of the building is, I don't know if there's a a picture of the building, but essentially that side of the the guest house is flat. I mean, it's it's where a carport would go. The other side, on the south side, is a a set of windows and and almost built out like, almost like a sunroom type structure. And so it it's an odd, it'd be a very odd look to put a carport there. But again, thi- this was my client saying that this all started because they went to apply for a septic permit to finish out the building and realized what the mess that they were in. They want to do things the right way. They'd like to put a carport on it and obviously need the variance to do that. So it's it's really small. And 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 I think that the hardship there is that they didn't create, I mean, I know that this was created by an individual. It just wasn't created, this hardship wasn't created by my clients. And and so they're hopeful that that you'll grant this variance. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for variance request? Anyone wish to speak against? We'll enclose public comments. Any questions from Commissioners? Entertaining a motion?
I make a motion to approve variance P twenty-three dash O two eight eight.
There were a motion and second to approve variance P twenty-three dash zero two eight eight. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is variance request P twenty-three dash zero two eight nine for the same property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is variance P twenty-three zero two eight nine of Kristen and Philip Gibson. Again, parcel A zero one zero seven six B A. They're currently zoned A.R. in the suburban neighborhood character area. And they're requesting a variance to allow a guest house to have a separate driveway access from the principal dwelling. You have the recorded plat, concept plan. Staff, again, based on standards and limitations, special exception variance approval, this request does not meet all necessary conditions to grant a special exception as the hardship is created by the property owner with the construction of an unpermitted structure and trying to use an access that violates condition of the plat, which now has been reversed. Staff recommends denial of the request as there does not appear to be a hardship as the driveway for the principal dwelling could be extended according to the concept plan. Thank you.
Mr. Porter, anything to add?
Nothing really. This is just the sister request to the rezon. We had to modify the condition that prohibited accessing it on that one foot no access. This is the variance to actually allow that driveway to be there. So, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the variance request? Does anyone wish to speak against? Here now, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from Commissioners? Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I I just want to make a statement first about, you know, I want to thank the planning commission in doing all the due diligence to make the, bring this to us because they follow the rules and regulations. I hate it that the the previous builder made all the mistakes. And sometimes we have to correct those mistakes when they make the mistakes. But in this case, the work was done by our planning department and brought us the right things we should probably should do and, you know, and and sometimes we have to adjust that. So we appreciate them for all the work they do for sure. And I'll make that motion to approve P twenty-four zero one six zero hundred, I'm sorry. Variance P twenty-three zero two eight nine Kristen and Philip Gibson, request for a guest house to have separate driveway access, two point four acres, ten thirty Garrett Road Residential.
There were a motion and second to approve variance request P twenty-three dash zero two eight nine. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is variance request P twenty-four dash zero one six zero. This is Hunter Hargrave, request to allow an accessory building over one thousand square feet. It's point six acres at twelve thirty Oconee Forest Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is variance P twenty-four zero one six zero Deborah B. Hargrave, applicant owner. This is parcel B zero seven A zero one two A. It's currently zoned R one in the suburban neighborhood character area. Again, the request is a variance to allow an accessory metal building constructed without permits that is one thousand two hundred and eighteen square feet to remain that is in violation of the accessory structure allowance of one thousand square feet of gross floor area if a lot is less than three acres in size. This is the recorded plat you have with your application, a a previous really recorded plat. The concept plan, slightly larger version showing the the structure. Architectural renderings of the structure that is now in place. You have these aerial views, January twenty twenty-three, no structure, structure, January fourth. And based upon the standards and limitations for special exception variance approval, this request does not meet all the necessary conditions to grant a special exception variance as the hardship was created by the property owner with the construction of an unpermitted structure. Staff recommends denial of the request as the applicant did not indicate why the size limitation could not be met. Thank you.
Now we're here from the owner.
Any questions? I know there've been some rumors that the building is being used for a business. It's not being used for a business. It's being used for personal storage for stuff that we have from a storage unit. And due to today's times, prices going up, it made sense to build something that was ours versus continue to pay for a storage unit. So I can answer any questions that anybody has.
Okay, thank you. James Griffith?
Evening Commissioners. I didn't plan to speak. I wrote a letter supporting Hunter and Debbie. I consider them friends. I thought it odd to speak. You know, you speak up for your friends. You're not, you're not much in a way of being loyal. I don't have any problem with their building. It's dark brown. Unless you're looking for it, you don't even notice it as you drive by their house. It's not like it's fluorescent green or pink or something like that. And I had no idea it was bigger than its, the requirements, because it doesn't look that big to me. But I don't know, I I think you ought to consider Hunter's work for the county as a volunteer fireman when you make this decision too. And our neighborhood's a great neighborhood. We've lived there since ninety-eight. And I don't remember having any problems before this, so hopefully won't have any now. Thanks.
Kaylee Cooper?
Hi, I'm Kaylee Cooper. I'm their next door neighbor, which actually my property backs up right, or right to the side of where there is. Same thing James said, we love our neighborhood. We haven't been there as long as a lot of people here. But we raise our family. We love everyone there. The Hargraves are wonderful people. Same, I didn't realize the size of it, but I just want to support them. And like I said, we hang out in our backyard a lot. It's right there. It kind of just blends in. Don't notice it. Didn't realize the size. I mean, you guys know, some of you may know the Hargraves, but they're wonderful people and I just want to consider that, consider, you know, this will help get some of the stuff off the road back there to store it. Yeah. And like I said, we're the next door right by them, and we have no issue with the size or location of it, and we're the closest one to them.
Chris Mobley?
So I don't live there, but I just really want to kind of speak on behalf of the Hargraves. They're some of my closest friends, one of the most honest and hardworking people that I know. Hunter's dedicated his life to public service. His family's just good people. They're good, honest people, and I don't think they're trying to do anything nefarious. They're just trying to have some extra stores there. They've got the trailer you saw in the picture. They can move, they can get stuff into the building there and try and clean up the property and make things look better. So that's really all I've got. Appreciate y'all.
Right now, we'll move over to those signed up to speak against. I have John Parker.
Chairman, Commissioner, my name's John Branson Parker. I go by Bran. I live at ten forty Oconee Forest Drive, just down the road. We've been in that house since August of ninety-six. I think we're the third longest-tenured residence in that subdivision now. Our friends in Brits have been there longer. Ms. Gray's been there longer. That doesn't matter, but it it happens to be true. I want to echo what has been said about the Hargraves. They are good people. They are great people. And I too appreciate Hunter's public service. He was the first EMT on the scene when my wife fainted in her tomato patch a couple of summers ago, and I appreciate that. I think the world of Debbie. The Coopers, Kaylee and Wes Cooper, are who we used to be. They're the young family. My, we raised two boys in that neighborhood, and they're raising two little ones now. There's not a finer gentleman or more honorable man in Oconee County than James Griffith. And he and Michelle, we're proud to call friends. Our sons wrestle together in middle school. His son was a lot better than mine, but he was a lot better than just about everybody. That said, I respectfully disagree with the characterization of the property. Reason, we have a land use ordinance, and as you all know, it says right there in the R one definition, maintain the character to make sure you don't have commercial traffic, non-residential traffic on limited roads predictability in the future. It's a small subdivision. It's a small, this particular house is just over the top of a blind hill. There are a lot of reasons you don't want a lot of traffic in there. I I would submit that your staff's assessment of the scale of this project is is pretty much right. If you look at the photographs, if you look at it, if you were to go out there and see that, chief, you would see that it's perhaps not consistent with the stated goals of providing a little more storage than a scrap booking. You, for example, if you look at the plat, you notice that a feature of the construction is a large, and you can see it on the aerial photographs, a large gravel driveway that leads from the front to the back. You don't need a large gravel driveway to get your personal lawn mower, as explained in the letter, in and out of your storage shed. It's really more suitable if you're bringing multi-axle trailers with a track loader or a Bobcat or the kinds of things that Hunter uses in in his business. It's more consistent with that use. And if you had that kind of building, it would certainly be, irrespective of what may or may not have happened in the past, certainly might be a temptation to use it going forward. If you had a commercial grade, really nice poured concrete floor stubbed in, two bays on the side, massive garage door bay in the front. That might be a temptation to use that for a commercial purpose if you were in the septic tank business or in the grading business. Which is of course precisely what is not allowed in in our neighborhood, in our one neighborhood. The. Letter that that Hunter has has submitted said I'll abide by every other rule, if you let me keep this building. If this building stays, if it's the commission's judgment that this building should stay like it is, or this building should stay in a smaller configuration, or if this building goes away and is replaced by something else that is in compliance. Stargrave has assured all of us, and you don't have to assure us, you're required to anyway, but Mr. Hargrave has assured us, I'll abide by the rules. And those rules include, under the home business requirements, that's got to be approved as a special exemption too, you can't do that without the county say so. And if you are doing that, employees can't congregate on the property and park there while they go do jobs for any purpose, according to the ordinance. You can't have construction equipment, earth-moving equipment housed on that property, whether this building's approved or not, that wouldn't be a permissible use and Mr. Hargrave has assured us that wouldn't happen. The building as it is currently sitting there, again, is considerably more consistent with a a commercial application than it is a scrapbooking room and a. And a lawnmower shed, and it's not unreasonable to suspect that if somebody were driving around Oconee Forest looking for a place to raise a family, that they might see it too, and James, there's a house between James's house and the backyard, but if you're walking your dog up and down the hill like we do, you can see it. And I think staff has appropriately. Pointed out that the scale is kind of wrong. And that. As it sits, it's a little bit of, it's inconsistent with with what those of us who've raised families there and hope for, for Kaylee and Wes. And for Jack that lives across the corner from them and the children that we do have, there are, you know, like six kids underage seven who live within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the intersection there at Sharon Place. So. That's my concern, I speak for myself, I speak for my wife, I don't have any clients here tonight, and I, there are lots of people here to talk about it and they have good concerns. I tell you, what they're not doing though is attacking good people, the Hargraves are good people. But some of the neighbors do feel like they've been put in an awkward position by this. I feel like I've been put in a kind of an awkward position by this, James is absolutely right, this has never happened before since we've been there. And we have a sort of a new tradition of cookouts on Fourth of July, get-togethers to walk around the neighborhood. And I truly believe that that'll keep going, this is a stress ore, this is not a torpedo on that neighborhood. But it. If the traffic is not going to be there, if parking in the road is not good, because again, that's another promise that we've made. Yeah, I don't think the Hargraves could be surprised if after promising we're going to abide by all the rules, somebody complained about, they saw a rule that wasn't being abided by. But the building as it's constructed right now is is a little much, in the opinion of Parker household, I defer to my neighbors on how, and I don't contend that I speak for anybody else, but I am proud to live there. And I do respect Kaylee and I do respect James. And I do respect Debbie and Hunter, and I am thankful to him. But I would, given what we're facing, I would ask the commission to follow staff's recommendation. Thank you for your time.
Paula Sissler.
Board, thank you so much for your time, my name is Paula Sissler, I'm a homeowner in Oconee Forest subdivision. Our neighborhood, as you probably know, is very modest with affordable homes, some of our homes are not even any bigger than thirteen, eight, eight-hundred square feet, thirteen-hundred-and-eight, eighty square feet, so that's pretty small. So a building that is twelve-hundred-and-eighteen square feet is almost as big as a house in our neighborhood, okay? I first became aware of the application for the variance at twelve-thirty Oconee Forest Drive property a few weeks ago when I saw the sign posted in our neighborhood. I reviewed the application and I was surprised that our neighbor had failed to secure the appropriate building permit for this very large twelve-hundred-and-eighteen-square-foot metal building. The property, the building structure is too large and is incorrectly located as well, which you will see on the second request for variance that we'll review next. Based on my observations and the observations of many of my neighbors, and let me add that I submitted five additional letters to the county clerk this evening that were opposed to this variance. I believe that Mr. Hargrove, Mr. Hargrave, he operates a business of heavy equipment and whatnot, and he drives. Large pieces of equipment, a trailer and everything back and forth in our property in our neighborhood quite regularly, sometimes they're parked out in the, in front of his home or on the gravel driveway, which Mr. Parker discussed. You know, based on this business that he runs, frankly, I find it hard to believe that he'd never gave any thought to investigating with the county that before he built this big huge structure. Because he does do some sort of septic tank business, so you have to have a permission to put a septic tank in a certain place. In twenty-nineteen, one of our other neighbors at eleven-seventy Oconee Forest Drive, they built a structure without a building permit and were, after various communications with code enforcement, were required to tear that structure down. In closing, I'd like to say that the development codes exist for a reason. Your own planning department recommends that you deny this variance and the next one as well, please help our neighborhood maintain these building codes and deny variances requested for this property, thank you very much.
Armando Rodriguez.
Evening gentlemen and ladies, I reside at ten-ninety-one Sharon Place. I strongly object the variance, and I support code enforcement's finding that this variance should not be approved. I happen to be in the construction and remodeling business. And I currently actually own property in Olga Thorpe County, approximately eight acres, and I keep all of my equipment and everything that I have on my property in Olga Thorpe County. I try not to subject any of my neighbors, any of my equipment, or any of my trailers, or of my staff. So I know the importance of trying to maintain an R-one neighborhood as a neighborhood, and that's what we have there. My spouse had indicated that in two thousand and nineteen, what occurred in my neighborhood was unfortunate, but the homeowner allowed their son-in-law. Who was in the construction business, to build a storage building just under three-hundred square feet in two thousand and eighteen. And at that same time, we were completing our building. On ten-ninety-one Sharon Place, which we filed for a permit, and we even had to apply for a variance because we had to relocate the building because code, planning, it had to be in a certain location, and we had to move it behind the house, and that was approved. And we went through the whole process, went through imperfections, and we did everything. Now, this customer or this neighbor was living at eleven-seventy Oconee Forest Drive. In two thousand and nineteen, they received several letters, they were out of compliance with the building, that they did not file for a permit. And the homeowner unfortunately was being the one subjected to all of this. Eventually, they did receive an order from code enforcement that the building had to be torn down. And one of the neighbors even asked me, why is it that this neighbor in two thousand and nineteen was ordered to, you know, to remove a structure, and all of a sudden, we're allowing this variance to go through? And the nature of my business, like I've seen earlier today, a lot of people apply for their variance first, like I did. It goes before a public hearing. Correct? That's the way it's normally done, and then, once you get approval or denial, that's where things go. And I can assure you, the neighbors at Oconee Forest are not all in favor of this, they all have been subjected to in the last year, they know exactly what's occurring, and we mind our own business, but it has now become public knowledge and we have a right to either say yes or no. I for one, believe that this hardship was not created by the neighbors, because I can assure you one thing, being in the business, I did, I even told some of the neighbors, I should have taken the responsibility, gone down there when I saw the first concrete truck roll in and gone to the neighborhood, what are you doing here? This isn't a neighborhood, what are you doing here? But I didn't because I mind my own business, the Parkers mind their own business, the Thomases mind their own business, we mind our own business, we try to have a good neighbor. But wrong is wrong here, let's make no exception here, this is wrong. We want to establish our neighborhood the way it's always been. It's a difficult decision on your parts to make, but gentlemen, make no exception here, it's a difficult task to make the decision on this matter, I understand this, I've seen this before. But I think the well-being of this neighborhood is actually more important than the interests of one man, I really do, because it's going to affect the rest of all. And I don't want to have to come here in three months or six months and then have to look at another matter that might be surfacing. I hope you can all understand the objection of these neighbors that just do not want us to be approved. Thank you so much.
Mary Fletcher.
My name's Mary Fletcher and I've lived in Oconee Forest subdivision for thirty-four years. Personally, I do not know Mr. Hargraves, but I do believe that he's trying to scam the system. He's a contractor by trade and should know about building codes and permits. If he's allowed to proceed without consequence, what's the point of having ordinances at all? Mr. Hargraves chose to ignore the laws and saying, oops, and I'm sorry, is not fair to all the other citizens in Oconee County who go out of their way to be good neighbors, like those here tonight, asking for permits, variances before construction and not after. I ask you, Board of Commissioners, please do not indulge Mr. Hargraves' willful negligence, thank you.
Josh Welch.
Good evening Commissioners, my name's Josh Welch and my wife and I are probably the newest residents or homeowners within the Oconee Forest subdivision, we moved there in two thousand and twenty, which was a perfect time to relocate your family from Raleigh, North Carolina. But we chose the subdivision based off of the residential appeal and the fact that we have two twin daughters who are seven years of age. We are concerned by the size of and appearance of the structure, the disregard for the county ordinances, including the requirement to obtain property or proper permits, has led in a, to resulting in a building nearly three-quarters the size of an average home, which has been commented by a previous neighbor. This is nearly the size, three-quarters the size of a house within our neighborhood, it is certainly visible if you are driving into the neighborhood, and can say that if we had seen this, we probably would have raised, had caution and may not have moved forward with purchasing the property that we did. The size of the metal accessory structure is out of scale with surrounding residential uses. Additionally, I support what my neighbors have said as relating to the intended use of the structure, consistently, we've seen heavy equipment stored on on the on the curb, brought into the the neighborhood on heavy, you know, trailers, et cetera, things that I certainly would not want my kids riding their bikes by as these things are coming in and out of the neighborhood. I believe that Ms. Cooper's comment of get stuff off the road and move it back there is a perfect assessment as to what this is truly intended to do, which is to move heavy equipment that has been placed on the curb consistently for months, to move it back behind the house into this structure, which is why it's built the way that it is built. It does not align with any of the residential character of our neighborhood, and I believe that granting this variance will only encourage the continued misuse of the property for business purposes, thank you.
All right, Mr. Hargrave, you have an opportunity for rebuttal on anything that was said?
I would like to clarify a few things, so I do not own or operate a septic tank business, I work for a guy that does. I work in in Green County, so I work for him on my days off. And I've also got cows and do hay and all that stuff that people know. When I have a piece of equipment that's on my trailer and I'm working in Stateum or Jefferson or somewhere like that. I'm not going to pass my house to go all the way to a place on Antioch Church Road that I lease, that is where all of our equipment is stored, materials are stored there, everything's stored there. My intent for this building has nothing to do with a business or storing anything there. I don't even like bringing stuff into the neighborhood because it's not an easy place to get in and out of sometimes. I'm always mindful of the children that are going up and down the road. And contrary to all these people's beliefs, that this building is going to be used for commercial use or to store the equipment, no, it's not, because I can't. I can't move the equipment around like I need to and place it in places that I need to or get it out of the weather because it's not an ideal location for it. This building, the reason that I did put a gravel driveway from the road, and I haven't put it, I haven't put gravel from the road to the to the fence, but I did put it from the fence to the building, is so that when you do back up there with a trailer to unload stuff from the storage building, I have a box trailer that's sitting in the front yard. And if this building is not able to stay where it is, then that box trailer is going to stay there, and I'm probably going to have to buy another one because I've got to get this, I've got, I've still got stuff in storage that has got to go, I've got to do something with it. When my parents got divorced, we moved from a five-thousand-square-foot house to a fifteen-hundred-square-foot house, and we have stuff that we don't, we haven't been able to go through, it's been in storage for the last fifteen years. And this, the reason that the building is the size that it is, is we had a storage building that was ten by, I think it was ten by twenty. This building is twenty by thirty, so I almost doubled the size of the storage unit. Number one, to be able to put the stuff in there, but also be able to spread it out somewhat and go through it and figure out what we have and what we don't have so that we can get rid of it. I understand the concerns from people about the traffic coming in and out, that traffic is not going to change any whether the building stays there or doesn't stay there. If I'm in, like I said, Jefferson, and I'm coming home this time of night, I'm not going to bypass the neighborhood to go all the way to Antioch Church Road, unload, unhook a trailer, and then turn around and go back there the next morning and hook a trailer up and load a machine back to go back to Jefferson the next day, or if I'm going from Jefferson to Monroe or wherever, it just, it's not practical, it doesn't make sense. I do my very best not to bring the stuff in the neighborhood unless I have to or unless it's that circumstance, I don't keep it there all the time. The, yes, the process of putting the building up did take longer than it was expected to, it took almost a year and probably a year and three months or something like that. My question to everybody is if they had a problem with it. My question to everybody is if they had a problem with it a year ago, why are we, why was nothing said until July or I think it was July of this year? You know, people, nobody came to me and had any concern with it. Anybody that I talked to was fine with it. And, you know, my intent is not to, not to stir the neighborhood up or to cause any problems with anybody or create a hazard or a danger for, for the neighborhood. So, you know, that's where I am.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments and enough to any questions from Commissioners.
I've got one and I'll, I'll address it to the, the folks that are opposed. Is there any type of homeowners association out there? Nothing?
Nothing.
We don't have a homeowners association, some of the lots and the, the later build on the subdivision, like phase two or phase three, whatever it is, are encumbered by covenants. I believe this, this house is, my house is not, my house was in the first part, so I, I don't have a copy of it, but there, there are use covenants, but we don't have a, an organized group of folks that could have, I think I know your question, that could have met or could have noticed, could have gone as a group to do this.
Thank you. Mr. Herring, let me ask you, regardless of the building, I'm just, because it's been brought up, the vehicle, is that permitted? What Mr. Hargraves doing?
No, sir, parking vehicles in the right of way is not.
But on the property, he could do that?
Yes, I believe they were saying it was on the right of way there.
Okay, so nothing out on the street, that, that, that type of equipment?
That's a, that's a hazard to, through traffic.
So regardless?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. Guy, while you're still there, I got some query, Hargrave had mentioned about storage boxes or some kind of, are those permitted?
Yes, those small trailers are, yes, sir.
Okay, so they can be in the front yard?
Well, I believe it's on the driveway, yes, sir.
Okay, and secondly, is my understanding, if it, if the structure was a thousand square feet or less, it could have been permitted?
Yes, sir, as long as you met setbacks and environmental health.
Okay, so, so the fact-
Less than a thousand, yes.
Yeah, so even if he built a thousand square foot building but didn't get a permit, he'd still be in violation?
Yes.
He'd have to get a permit then?
That's right, yes.
All right, but in this case, he's exceeded the thousand square foot maximum that's allowed?
That's correct.
And is that because of the size of the lot? Is that thousand square feet?
And, and in R1, that's typically the standard. So if there's anything a thousand or greater, it would require board approval.
All right, thank you.
So you're counting everything under roof to get the twelve hundred?
Yes, sir.
So that's a, you got two garages and then a storage section in the middle. So if the, one of those side things were taken off, would that negate the use, having to do this variance?
You could, it depends, yes, sir, there's the, the setback variance that we still would have to deal with, but if you lessen the square footage to under a thousand, that would be fine. That would be acceptable, yes.
Hunter? You come back up. What, taking off one of the side carports, for lack of a better word, is that something that's doable? Do you know right off?
The building, yes, taking off one of those sides is doable. It's not practical, but it is doable. The actual main structure of the building would, and that would bring it in within code of a thousand square foot. The, we would still have the setbacks. And the reason that I placed the building where it is, my understanding was there was a ten foot setback from the side and a five foot setback from the back, but apparently I read that wrong. And we're ten feet on, you'll see it on the next one, but there, we're ten feet on one side and I think it's twenty-seven feet on the back.
So either way, it doesn't fix?
So either way, we, we wouldn't, that's why we did them into two, we wouldn't be able to, if we did the thousand square foot, we wouldn't be able to do the side or if one was, either both of them would have to be altered or, or I guess the setback variance would have to be approved and then we would have to, that, then we could do the thousand square foot. If that makes sense.
When you were looking at those requirements about the setback, you didn't see anything in there about a thousand foot, square foot?
No, sure.
Going over that?
I didn't see anything about a permit for an accessory building. So, my understanding is if it's a accessory building, you don't have to get a permit for it unless it's over, I think it was a ten by ten, is that correct? Now that I, now I know that, but it being an accessory building, I didn't know it required a permit.
I can tell you, I went through this small building and I went through the whole shooting match. Environmental health? Had to go through environmental health before I even got to Guy's office. I didn't have any water, sewer, or anything on that building. So, yeah, you, I mean, I even pulled my workers off. Then I went and got the permit, it took me over a month to get it.
I've been in this county for a long time and I've seen a lot of barns, a lot of buildings put up. And I know a lot of people that have done the same thing that I've done and never gotten a permit for it. So, I didn't, I didn't know that it was required for an accessory building, like I said. If I'd have known what I know now, it would have been a whole different, a whole different ballgame and I would have come before to ask for these variances and gone through what I've gone through.
Assuming it was quite expensive too, the build?
Yes, sir.
And also-
And that was one of, that was one of my, you know, you can, you can get these, these prefab metal carport things. You can get, there's a number of different things that you can get, but this building I spent more money on to make it nicer so that it wasn't, it didn't just look like, you know, throw a carport up and put some wood sides on it or something like that.
I know you heard Commissioner Horton ask Mr. Herring the question about parking, so all your neighbors now know that it's illegal to park on that street.
I'll park in the yard.
So, that may be something you need to change too, because they're probably going to call you out on that, for sure.
No, I mean, parking in the yard is not going to be a problem. Do I need to get a permit to put gravel down so that I don't track mud into the road?
Well, I'm not sure we've made a decision on any of this yet, but, uh-
Well, I'm just saying, like, if, is that something that's going to be required if you, regardless of whether any of this is, I've still got to have a place to park and the driveway is not big enough to park two cars in. I mean, I have a, a bigger truck.
Yes, I've got pictures of your truck and the trailers you pull, I guess it's the same trailer for every time you pull in, whether it's equipment or whether it's a tractor. Which, I'd be pretty tight with that other trailer in the yard as well.
Yeah. No, it's never been a problem till now, so, and it's been this way for three years, four years, probably four? Four years, yeah. Maybe five. I wasn't living here five years ago.
Any other questions from Commissioners?
Hunter, I, I do have one comment, as far as your driveway, additional driveway, there is a driveway permit that you would need to get and so I'd encourage you to, anything that you're going to do moving forward, just check with the planning department.
I mean, I definitely will. I got, me and Ethan have become very good friends, so I'll go straight to him and say, this is what I'm doing, do I need a permit?
Mr. Herring, I gotta, we're getting down to the decision-making time. And I think Mr. Harden already kind of touched on it, but if, if this thing were to start over, what would he have to do? Let's say, for instance, that it was voted down, he's got to start over. Can you kind of walk us through real quick, if he wanted to use that building? I know he couldn't use it at the size, you know, whether by right, a homeowner could do that at a thousand feet or less, square feet or less? What would he have to do?
Well, he would have to go through the permitting process and submit an application that met the ordinance.
All right.
And at that time, we would look at what he's proposing. He would need to make sure he had environmental health approval, discussion with environmental health, making sure he kept his usable souls and met their ordinances. And if he proposed something that was not in keeping with the code and the, the ordinance such as this, he would have to come to you guys for that, that approval, that variance. And he'd have to show that there was a hardship in not being able to make it or, you know, through the, and not being able to meet the code for some reason.
Is there-
But at this point, we have a structure that is not permitted at all, right?
Yes. Things to be denied for?
It does, yes. And the item before you tonight is, would you allow such a structure? Would you allow the sides? That, that's what you're voting on this evening. Would you allow that in that subdivision? And then, we would look at the next variance, which would be the setback variance to the, to the rear and the side.
Would that second variance come into play in either case, whether it's a thousand square feet or twelve hundred, eighteen hundred square feet?
It, it would, depending on the orientation of the building that he would propose. So I would, I would submit that we would go through that variance anyway, regardless of this, yeah.
Eventually.
But if it was turned down, we wouldn't be going through it tonight?
Well, it would depend on his proposed orientation of the new building. So if you were to turn down the thousand square feet, then he would have to determine what that thousand, over that thou, what that thousand square feet would look like.
It could be more or less.
So he could still want to put it in that encroached rear setback, I, I don't know, that would be up to them to decide and, and working with environmental health too.
But technically, he could take off the side, be under the thousand square feet.
I know we discussed in the past, do we have a fine procedure in place for something like this?
No, sir, the tearing down the building, I think, would be fine enough.
Well, there is a-
I'm saying if the building were left in place.
Getting the permit is additional fee.
It is, there's a triple permit fee for unpermitted structures, yes.
But if it's turned down tonight, that's, building's got to go.
The building would have to be modified to be under the thousand. And then, depending on the variance.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, that's what I'm getting at, is if it was voted down, then he would have to modify it to get it under that, get it in.
That's right, yes, sir, to be in keeping with the R1 subdivision.
Not at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd make a motion that we decline the request for variance P twenty-four zero one six oh.
There will be a motion in a second to deny variance request, P twenty-four dash zero one six zero, any discussion? On the paper? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is variance request, P twenty-four dash zero one six one, which is the same piece of property for a, a reduced side and rear setback.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is variance P twenty-four zero one six one, David B. Hargrave, applicant owner. Again, this is B zero seven A zero one two A, Zoned R1 and suburban neighborhood territory area. The request is a variance to the rear setback and to the side setback, encroachment of twelve point eight five to the rear, forty foot setback and point five five feet to the ten foot side setback. You have the recorded plats in your application and the concept plan. This is showing the slight encroachment of a half foot at that point and then the encroachment into the forty foot, showing a twenty-seven foot rear building setback proposed. This is the architectural renderings submitted, again, you've seen these. And we have the twenty-three construction and twenty-four construction pictures. Based on the standards and limitations for a special accession variance approval, this request does not meet the necessary conditions to grant special accession variance, as the hardship was created by the property owner with the construction of an unpermitted structure, staff recommends denial of the request as the applicant did not indicate why the setbacks could not be met. Thank you.
Hunter, would you have anything on this one?
The reason that I'm asking for the, or the reason that I placed that building where it is to begin with is so that the house is still operating on the original septic system and in order to have enough area to do a repair, that, I would need the area that would be, I could put it within the, I could have put it further up, but I wouldn't have had enough area to do the repair in the backyard. I could do the repair in the front yard, but it's not an ideal, I mean, it's, I can move it to the front, move the repair area to the front yard, but I, it would be better suited in the backyard for the repair area. So that was the reason that the building was placed where, as, as far back as it is. Also to, you know, not have it just sitting in the middle of the, middle of the yard versus being back. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to, to table or postpone until we have, is able to get back with the planning department on the, if there's a reconfiguration of the building?
Be up to the board for that.
I mean, is that what's, I don't know, I mean, once, if he goes to a thousand square feet, is he going to be encroaching? We don't know that, do we, tonight?
Well, I guess it's just, if that side can come off, it saves.
But you don't, I mean, what my point is, we don't know if there's going to be an encroachment or not, is that right, Mr. Herring?
Let me show you the concept plan and some measurements that we took for that. I believe it was this slide. So you notice the, the orientation of the building in, in, in red. This is the forty foot building setback line, which is required, this is the encroachment into that by the current building. The, the green is what would be left without a rear variance.
So he's encroaching on the back?
Yes, sir, he, he's encroaching on the side slightly at this location, but then on the back is the majority of the encroachment.
Okay.
And that would cut through the building, the middle of the building, yes, sir.
All right, and I would, all my question then, very obvious.
Ellie Cooper.
Hi, I just want to say once again, I'm the neighbor next, like on that side where he's talking about that right corner. And I don't have a problem, I'd rather be back in the corner out of the way there. I've learned a lot, though, I can say, when it's time for us to build a shed, I will say that. So is it educational, but, uh, yeah, I just want to say that's close to our property, our, we have a fence that we share with them and I'd rather be back in that corner than up more.
Thank you. Chris? Mr. Parker?
Sir, I, I would just ask that my previous remarks be extended to this one as well, and I'd like to reiterate, everybody involved here is good people and friendly people, and we, as a group, are sorry that it's come to this and put y'all on this position.
Sisler.
I would just extend my remarks for this as well, and just making the point that Mr. Harden made, that if, you know, the encroachment in the back is severe, and that's about thirteen feet, so that pretty much would cut the center of the building. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Let me tread a little hard up here for you guys. You heard me earlier, I'm in the construction business. I'm not gonna bring my equipment to my neighbor. Years ago, when I moved here, I invested in property, because I knew that we couldn't bring this equipment. Now, if this goes through, I can start bringing in my equipment, I can bring in those twenty foot trailers, I can start bringing my two tractors, I can put them in my yard, because my property is pretty accessible, I can do that. I'm being very honest with you guys. This is an R one zone neighborhood, neighborhood. I have eight acres in Oglethorpe County, it's for agriculture use. I have three shipping containers, a seventy-five foot pole barn, and two additional storage buildings. Even before I put the three shipping containers, I consulted with my neighbor, who happens to be a law enforcement officer, and I asked him, by the way, I don't need a permit to put these in here, I already found out through Oglethorpe County, do you mind if I place them here? And I said, and he said, well, do you mind putting them further back? This is sure. Being a good neighbor is sometimes asking. I was never asked, and sometimes neighbors don't ask. But that hardship for not taking them and taking the due diligence, that we're all supposed to, because I know one of my neighbor who just recently put up a storage building, and I recommended to her being in this business, you don't need it, but let's go to planning and zoning and let's get it in right. Because good neighbors do those things. Again, I have a construction business. It's a requirement, I don't wanna bring in my equipment. And a lot of times, I'll get home late, because yes, I have to go back to Oglethorpe County, I'll tell the guys, bring the equipment back, I will not bring it into there. I have a Toyota pickup truck and I drive it home. But maybe I should be able to bring now my trailers, my equipment into the neighborhood. Is that being a good steward to the neighbors? Isn't that what it's about? I've only been there fifteen years, and I would never do this harm. If I took the time to get a building permit, to put a storage building, hundred and ninety-two square feet, and I remember when planning is over, are you planning on siding this building to match your home? And I said, yes, I don't want it to stick out. This, this has to be something, it's a simple. If code enforcement has already denied it, we need to go that route. If the neighbor in two thousand nineteen was requested to move, remove a structure at eleven seventy in two thousand nineteen, they received an order from code enforcement to remove that building, then why are we changing then how we apply the ordinances in the practices in the community for one individual? Again, I pose the question. Is the well-being of our neighborhood more important, or is it the well-being of one individual for what he needs to do? I know the neighbors are not agreeing about this. Wrong is wrong and right is right. If you make a mistake, you have to pay the consequences. And believe me, I have made a lot of mistakes in the building industry. I have, and I've had to absorb those costs. I don't pass them on to the consumer. So please be really careful on this, this is a, not only a moral decision, but it's an ethical, and it will affect the neighborhood. I even consulted with a Realtor, it will affect the neighborhood. We don't need this approved in the neighborhood, we just don't. And we don't need to have a conflict about it. You know, I wanna say one thing here about the neighbors. You ever seen those nineteen thirties films from Frankenstein, where all the neighbors come out of their house with pitchforks and, and torches, and charging up the hill? That's not what's happening here. We know what the code and ordinances are there. We observe them, we've never had this problem other than two thousand nineteen. We should adhere to them. Code enforcement's already made a decision, default to that decision, it's a simple thing. Please understand that this will affect the neighborhood if this is allowed to go through. I'm sorry for the, the applicant's hardship. It's a hard lesson, I understand that. So please, please reconsider it.
May I ask you, what, what is it that we've done? We just voted down? I'm confused.
What are you confused about?
You got me confused.
Well, we're gonna ask him questions at the property-
Okay, Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question? Was my earlier motion to deny the variance?
That was on the first variance, now there's a second variance that we're actually reviewing, is it not correct?
Well, it's been corrected, but this ain't the right time.
Okay, well-
We'll do that as-
I thought this was the second variance that we're looking at.
Do you have anything else to add for the variance?
No, I do not have anything else to add. Thank you very much, Joe.
Confused, I'm sorry.
Mary Fletcher.
I just wanna add that Mr. Hargrave said that neighbors didn't complain. Well, when it was first built, I assumed that it was permitted. And I assumed that if this is what the county permits, that I, as a citizen in the county, would say, okay, I don't like it, but I will allow it in my neighborhood. But when, when I found out that none of it was permitted, and that now we're going to have to just excuse somebody who doesn't wanna follow the rules, I was not okay with that. And so that's why I'm speaking now. Thank you.
Josh, everything there?
First, I'd like to clarify, your motion earlier was not misunderstood, and we greatly appreciate that. Secondly, I would say, the, the original inquiry to this was made by me, the call was to the county, asking if there was a business permit that had been approved without my knowledge, or without any public hearing to it. So I made the call not about the building itself, there was concerns about that, mainly around the traffic and the, the amount of equipment coming in and out of the property. I believe that this building was placed where it was, so that Mr. Hargrave could access heavy equipment to the building. I think it is oriented the way that it is, so that he can put heavy equipment there to navigate around the house. I'm a firm believer of that. I think that the, the, the fact that, you know, the building is the size that it is, we all live in small houses, it's been said, we understand the crunch. I have two seven-year-old daughters, I know the fact that exponentially things grow. I recognize that hardship of going through things and making sure that what you decide to keep and what you don't decide to keep. But I think that the reason that this building encroaches the way that it does is because of the scale and size that it is, and that encroachment is, is something that obviously you all are gonna vote on, but wanna make sure that it's clear that I think it was placed there for its intended use, which is business. So I appreciate the opportunity, and again, just wanna extend my comments further from previously.
Alright, with that, we'll close public comments and open up any questions for Commissioners. There you go.
I'm-
You're done?
Yeah.
I've just got a point of clarification, since the previous motion, the previous request was denied. So at this point, does he have to comply with the thousand square foot rule? Or does he have to completely remove it?
At this point, he would have to submit for a permit for a thousand square foot building. So kind of the Amherst point, maybe we don't vote on this till we get that, or move forward, so it's kind of what the board wants to do. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, so regardless, he's gotta come, submit for permitting, environmental health, the whole, all the steps, pay the additional permit fee, then it may not be as far as many square feet off or whatever. Little bit unknown there.
Oh, Mr. Herring, since there, and I'm assuming that there was a concrete slab poured for this?
I believe so, yes, sir.
So, since that concrete slab is an encroachment, if the building square footage was reduced to a thousand, would that concrete slab have to be out of the, or we would have to approve a variance?
That the variance would have to be approved, that's right, yes, sir.
Kind of seems like a, at this point, we need to know what the structure's gonna look like before we approve the variance. Yeah, clarification question too. With the slab, could it be that environmental health doesn't like where the slab is?
Could be, I don't know, I haven't seen a permit for it, so I don't know.
There's, so really, there's, there's three options, approved, deny, or postponed to the December third, or later. Not at this time, no questions from the audience.
Yeah, I do, I think, I think that's an appropriate choice, is to table until such times we have a, a revised concept plan, that, that meets the the now adjudicated variance, and then we would know where that rear setback line might need to be.
You have a question? We'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to table this request until further investigation about the, the permit.
Second. Yeah, motion second to table this to the December voting meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Right now, we'll move on to the confirmation of the Civic Center Director appointment. Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. If you recall, Sean Wheeler has retired, is retiring from the Civic Center after thirty-two years as the only director. I am very pleased and to recommend for confirmation Whitney Sperlich as the new Civic Center Director. Whitney is currently the Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, she has been with Oconee County Parks and Recreation since two thousand and three, when she began as a Root Youth Program Coordinator, has been promoted throughout the organization. She is a resident of Oconee County. She is also engaged in multiple leadership management certifications, a Chamber of Commerce Board Member, and a community servant on various other boards. We are extremely luckily, lucky, and pleased to have her as part of the organization, and she'll do fantastic in this role as the Civic Center Director. And I would ask for your ratification of my decision, thank you.
Question? Any public comment? Good. At your time. We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we ratify the appointment of the Civic Center Director.
Okay. Alright, we got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is discussion consideration of a Benefit Program Consultant Bid Award. So we received six responses to an RFP that was issued for benefit consulting services. All responses were evaluated by the committee. Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated received the highest rating. If approved, the committee will enter into final contract negotiations and make operational changes as needed to continue coverage for employees. The final contract will come back to the Board of Commissioners for final approval as soon as that is developed. Be happy to answer any questions on that item. Yes. Yeah. Was Gallagher also the consultant? They did help on the original item. They got the bid. Yes.
So what we're voting on now is just the consultant? Or are we voting on a new program?
No, there'll be additional investigations done on self-insurance side of it. So as they're able to get the data and analyze that data, it'll be brought back, and a final decision will be made at a later time. So as, as they dig in, they may find that, hey, we need to postpone this for six or eight months, and continue down the same direction we've been going, or be ready to pull the trigger in first of next year.
Let me make sure I got it.
No, you're good.
But Gallagher was doing the consultant, so they're just getting an extension?
No, we, we did sort of consultant to take the data we do have and give us independent analysis of whether going self-insured would be a good idea or not. Based on the data we were able to provide, that answer came back yes. Don't get the final numbers until you can dig way deep into the weeds on the numbers, which are not available in our current configuration. So they'll have to do additional, whoever the consultant is that takes us to the next level, will have to take different things to the market, get the final numbers. So this is, I said, based on the information we had, they took it to market, came up with a numbers that show it was the the right financial decision to head that direction. Devils are in the details.
But, uh, but nothing's, right now, nothing's changed as to the current handler or whatever, I'm not an insurance expert, but same company's got it, get us to that next point. That makes sense.
This would be a change from our current broker to another broker, to take us to the next level.
Okay, so current company, if we vote this in, they're through tonight. Or would they carry on till the end of their contract period?
We don't have a contract period for anything at this point.
Even with the existing?
With the existing.
Let's see if I can add some clarification, so, and the confusion a little bit is the, so the, the current incumbent is u- under a professional services agreement, but not a term, a term contract. So they, we utilize them as a vendor. This was a two-step process, the first step was seeking an independent look on kind of the go-no-go on the self-funding of the insurance company. Once that came back on a result, we went out to the market in an RFP, and had firms then solicit for that, so that is what we would be awarding at this point, is our consultant slash vendor for the, those services going forward.
It goes back to the consultants getting the job.
Correct. That, that is the recommendation, that is correct.
Let me just, let me, doesn't that seem to be skewed toward that consultant, though?
The-
If, you know, if, if you, if you're the consultant, and you're also gonna be considered, that seems to be a little bit skewed to one side or the other.
Well, I guess, part of the, so this, this was opened up, even, even the current provider bidding as well on this, through the RFP service, and if that's a consideration of the board, we can definitely go to our number two as far as the scores go, if that's loud enough.
Well, it would, it would for me, it just, it just looks like somebody's hired from whatever they had to do to be the consultant. And they're around everybody who's got the data, but they end up with a job, I think some folks might look at that a little, little different, but that's just my opinion.
Just so I'm understanding too, so the consultant itself, they were given, they were given county information to give us feedback. And, and all the other people on the list were not given that same information. But they had the information upfront?
Yes.
I'm trying to understand it.
Yeah, so the proposal, so it's, yeah, yeah, it's two separate processes. One is to understand where we are in our current world- Yeah, so the proposal, so it's, yeah, yeah, it's two separate processes. One is to understand where we are in our current world right now. And understand what it, what it would be, somebody has to provide that. We took the additional, so we got that information, right? Gallagher provided that information, did an analysis of where we are on the, on that, and then make a decision. On whether we should move forward or not move forward with a self-funding mechanism. We, we would have, from a procurement perspective, we could move forward and direct source Gallagher or any other firm at that point. We then took that information, say, here's where it is, all right. So then from an RFP perspective, what are your qualifications? What are the services similar? And the proposals were sent in to identify who would be the appropriate. Broker slash consultant going forward for our health services. So it's an equal footing in the, the proposals are not specific to O'Conne County in that here is the inside data. It's what can you, they provide us as a vendor service itself. So we're not looking at specific data information as far as the solicitation. It's, it's a binary two, two-part process.
You mentioned go or no-go scenarios earlier when you was talking.
Correct, so there's.
So basically, they, they came back with a lot of go and no-go scenarios?
So the go-no-go scenario, so we, we're, we're a fully funded and have been fully funded for our history here. So there's a question about whether to go to a self-funded model versus a fully funded model. And that's a very big decision and change to occur. And so that was the key point that we, as administration, want to understand whether we should take that point or not. We don't have the in-house capacity or. That's just not our wheelhouse to make that kind of decision or, or analytics. So we, we had a, we went to an outside group to do that. And then we thought, once we had that decision, we opened it up to the market, solicited RFP to, to the potential vendors. To have them solicit what their qualifications would be for the health benefit provider.
And, and I guess this, this all came about because we want to reduce our hundred, we want to reduce our, what, what money's, what it's costing us, a hundred percent.
So, yeah, less is always better than more. I mean, at the, at the end of the day, what we're, what we're looking for, and this is why we would go to a self-funding model, we're going to more of a cost containment. Um, but we're also looking to see we can expand benefit offerings for the employees at the same time. And provide a, a more rich overall program to it.
It's not like we're in financial difficulties and got to drop rate. That's what spurs a lot of people to look into self-funding. This is more about the program itself. Healthier workforce, certainly leveling the growth curve of the health insurance is a goal. But that money will likely be reinvested back into the program to offer either more services and.
Did get all that when I was reading through all the information. I got all that, but I also got some skepticism. I felt like I was, there were some. It, you just don't know what you're going to get yourself into when you go to self-funded. I get, I, I, there was some things that I read that just seemed like that was. There was no, there was no guarantee, obviously. There's no guarantee, no matter what's going to happen, because you don't know your employees, what sicknesses they're going to have or any of that stuff. On the stopgap, what is, can you explain the stopgap?
So that's kind of what you're talking about. So you, you pick a maximum amount you want to pay per employee, say that's seventy-five thousand dollars. Then you go to the secondary market, and you find a carrier who'll say, okay, anything over seventy-five thousand, I'll pick up. Up to us. Sometimes it's a certain amount or whatever the number is. And so then you also go to the insurance market and say, here's our group. Here's our, the maximum we want to pay for insurance. So if everybody got the same sickness in the same year, we don't want to pay over five million dollars. And then so you'd go find insurance to cover anything over five million government-wide. But you're doing the same thing that the, the fully covered insurance companies doing. You're just doing it yourself. And that, that's the need for the consultants to work that market.
Yeah, I, I hate to keep asking.
Oh, no, you're good.
I just was, I was reading it, I just got confused on a lot of it, I really did, because it just, uh, it's a lot, it was a lot to take in. And, you know, I don't, I don't have the insurance with the county, so I don't know how it operates. And I know y'all had a committee involved and, you know, I don't know how many people on the committee I know that, but. I know you did your due diligence on some, on, on all the stuff going through. There was a lot of stuff that I just, when I was reading through some of it, that I didn't understand the POS and the, the type of insurance you could pick from. I mean, I know that I've been there part of that in the past with my life, but there was still some confusion for me as far as. The e- even that we may still have to use Cigna in some, some, some way regardless?
No, what we're looking for is, I mean, that's ideal. Um, we're looking for as little disruption for the employees as far as what the service, but ultimately what we're looking for is overlap of network and provider. And whether you carry a Cigna card or a Blue Cross Blue Shield card, uh, is really kind of irrelevant from, from a, um. It's can you get the service and not have any kind of significant disruption? You'd like to, basically like your same doctors, right? And so that's what we're looking for as far as the change going forward. But the insurance, the insurance industry is what it is. Prices tend to only go one direction. Um, and so what we're looking to do is, um, you know, bring in a group and look at a plan design that will help with that cost containment. And then provide a richer benefit for the employees at the same time.
And I probably should know this, Justin, I'll ask you a bit. Over the last few years, how many, I mean, our interest has went up. The last three years, has it gone up, uh, what percentage-wise each year? Seven, eight, nine percent each year?
Yeah, we, we, we tend to start budgeting at ten percent. They come in somewhere between six and ten percent typically on our premiums.
I'm done right now.
I got one question, just to help maybe clarify it or either confuse us more. I'm not sure what it'll do, but if we go this route. And what, what the card that our employees will have in their wallet or their purse, their insurance card. What name will be on that card? Not the employee, but what, will there be an insurance company's name on it? Or will it say, O'Conne County Board of Commissioners?
Pull up my card, I, I don't, whatever it says now. I mean, it'll say Cigna or Blue Cross Blue Shield or Aetna or whomever, and it'll say Dustin Kirwack, O'Conne County.
That's what I'm saying, it is, is still an insurance card.
That's correct.
It'll have an insurance company's name on it.
That's correct.
Of some sort.
Yeah, nothing we're talking, yes, nothing we're talking about tonight would have Gallagher or any other company listed on the card. That is just something behind the scenes helping us get to there. It is. It is Cigna or Blue Cross Blue Shield. It would not be O'Conne County Health Inc. if that's what you're asking also.
Self-funded company.
Yeah, I don't, uh, outside my wheelhouse.
I'll be honest with you, from what I know, and I'm not an insurance person, I don't think that our employees would, it would even. Trigger that anything's different. It's really coming back down to, we pay the bills. And, but as far as their interaction with the medical profession, I don't, I don't really think that's, that's the issue. I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
Not an issue. I would have brought it up too, if I thought.
The, the headache should be occurring on the second floor of this building, not for the employees themselves when they deal with the medical providers.
So at this point, we don't have a decision about self-insured versus not.
There, there'll be several other opportunities. There's got to be more in-depth study done, right? So until that is finalized and you go to market for real and get the numbers back. That's when it comes down to. The true decision on staying where you're at or moving to a different model.
So the change in our policy period, that ends December thirty-first. And so we would continue our same. Method, and at least until December thirty-first.
This year, yes.
And then it would be up to the consultant to decide.
Right, but during that, they'll, they'll get the additional information and should have a good idea whether come January first. Do we stay where we're at for three months, six months, entire year, and then go from there?
So we're not saying at this point that we're going to change our current vendor. Other than we're hiring a consultant.
This would be a vendor change for making that. So the, the Gallagher was top scored, the FTP. FTP was a second. They were within one point of each other. So at the end of the day. If you got heartburn about Gallagher because they were involved in, um. The initial, the next company's right there with them.
So if we, and I know this is down the road, but if we did go with a self-insured model. Would there be an underwriter like the big carriers like Blue Cross, Cigna?
So you've got to have one of those big companies to process the claims. They have the, the network set up. They have to go through, they would apply it to whatever plan development we came up with and. Decide what the payment was and actually process the payment for us. And then we would be paying them a, some type of fee to do that and funding that actual claim amount.
So our pool, let's just say we, you know, have two hundred and fifty employees as part of this. So our pool would be two hundred and fifty, but it's going to be combined with whatever company's entire pool. So if we have a catastrophic loss, then it wouldn't affect us.
No, it'd still be our, we'd be our own pool. Would be our. The reinsurance will be based on just our employee. Based on our claims history, the underwriters would run all their special formulas and determine. All right, well, we'll, we'll cover this loss, but we'll charge you this amount. And when you go to market, you check with several different secondary carriers and they'll compete for that business.
So I can't, that kind of goes, you know, along with your comment earlier, Mark, that, um. I've had experience with both of those and, you know, it. One company, it was not a good experience. That was self-insured. And so I just want us to be cautious about proceeding on with something like that.
Definitely. I understand that. I was with a company, we were in a, with an association for health insurance. We changed carriers three times in three years. And the final carrier just stopped paying claims. We were actually writing employees' checks, go pay their doctor. But I've been on the very worst end of that. That is not something we want to do. Again, the, the top priority is. Based on everything we've done, I think we can get a better product for our employee at the end of the day. And work toward that healthier workforce.
And I think that's what we should be doing at all times, trying to get a better product for our employees. Just one last question, John. Um, as far as, our coverage ends December thirty-first. That's pretty short-term. That's pretty short-based. Can we get, can we even, is it possible to get up and running with a self-funded account one January, but. And now it's November fifth today, and can we really get up and running? Or are we pushing the envelope just a little too quick?
So, so the initial conversation. Would be, can we get an extension and for how long of the current cover? Would they go another three months? We did a six-month extension already. So the, the cover is supposed to end on June thirtieth. Our current broker went to the, um, Cigna and got us extended to twelve thirty-one. And then that becomes the question, would they renew for three or six months? Or would they require a year? That negotiation will determine a lot on how quickly the program moves forward or that.
Because Gallagher's basically deciding whether we should go self-funded or stay where we're at.
They're recommending they're not deciding.
That decision is ours.
Yeah, it's ultimately the Board of Commissioners' decision or our decision. It's not Gallagher or any.
Yeah, no, I'm saying they're, they're gonna, they're gonna do the deal, the work and decide whether we need to.
Yeah, they will crunch the numbers, roll the bones, and say, here's what you're looking at. Here's your risk tolerance. Here's your. Kind of best-case scenario. Here's your worst-case scenario. Here's what your likely scenario is going to be. Here's our recommendation. And then we have to make kind of a decision off of that.
What was the name of the second bidder?
FTP.
And, NFP.
NFP, NFP.
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 Chairman, I mean, I support us moving forward to, uh, but whether we go with Gallagher or NFP is. It's not, you know, something I want. I mean, if, if, if one of the other commissioners would prefer to avoid a, an appearance of, uh, something. Uh, then I'm fine to go with the second bidder if they're qualified.
Certainly no objection from me on either one of them. They're both scored very high.
Everybody answer questions?
I think everybody's thinking for a minute.
Okay, that's fine. I can't, I can't, just want to make sure.
Now, we've had the comedian place, and I know they've done a lot of work to make this happen and everything, and, uh, you know, I, I'm. Guess I can make my apologies for me not being up to date on it good enough. I mean, but I'm trying to understand it, that's for sure, and what's good for this, what's good for our employees, that's for sure.
No, it's very, it's a very complicated, we, we spent a lot of time trying to figure this out. It's definitely not. Something you just grab and run with.
No, no, that's been, that's been definitely sure for sure there.
So that, so one clarifying point that might be of benefit to, to the group or to anybody listening, if, if we retain this benefit program consultant. And then we decide, no, we don't want to do it, then we terminate any relationship with that benefit program consultant.
They would continue on. Under the new, so if they decide that self-funding is the right way to go and we agree.
No, 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 no.
They were great. They find out self-funding is not the thing to do. This board agrees with them. They will continue on for the rest of that year as our. Benefit consultant even under the fully insured plan. One of the things this is doing as well is changing the payment method for the broker. Right now. It's a commission base from the insurance carrier, right? So this is set up so that whoever the broker consultant is will be paid with a check from O'Conne County. Working directly for O'Conne County. No commissions, fees, or other, can't remember the fancy word. But no other compensation comes into effect. So that, that's a big change that, in our method of operations. So this will be for one year. At that time, the board decides, do we want to renew? Or do we want to go back out? And rebid based on the insured program, because that's what we got. So either way, whoever we choose, and whatever that final negotiating charge is. That will be for one year, and that will be all the compensation they get, whether we fully insured or self.
So if we decide not to self-insure and, and we're, we have them for the rest of the year, will they get any other compensation other than what's in the contract?
No.
They don't get any?
No other commissions or fees.
Okay. Okay.
That, that was in the RFP, it's also would be in the final contract.
So how would we have assurances that we, that the consultant would not get some kind of benefit from the carrier or the insurance company? In addition to what we're paying?
Yes, we would just ask them, make sure the carrier was not admitting that, whoever that processor is. That they're, they're not selling a, they're selling a service at that point, so say you say with Cigna, you're buying their network and their services of process. So it's not like they're taking your money and investing it, making money there, and then trying to make a profit on your overall spend. Trying to make money on the fee, but I don't know enough about it to tell you that, but I can find out.
I'm, I'm just thinking like, this is totally irrelevant, but like in investments, where, you know, you sign a fiduciary agreement and they're not supposed to make commission off of it. They just, there's a, an upfront fee that you agree to, but there's no backend fees.
Yeah, I think that's part of it, but we, it is part of the, the broker arrangement, I, I think it, um, and, and we have some ability with, contact with Cigna or, or um, Blue Cross or whomever, like it's, we're, we're agnostic aside from the actual coverage on the network side itself. Uh, but I think with this, you get more transparency in process uh, with a direct fee and I, I'm sure they'd be happy in the contract to stipulate, you know, the fiduciary interest of the county as opposed to something with a, with a um, sorry, it's late in the evening. Yeah, a, a ratio off, off of the carrier itself.
Just reminding again one more time, John, how it'd work as far as if we went to the um, the fully funded, as far as how, what outside people will be working, I mean, there's, there's more than one, not just the, not just the broker itself or the company, is there, is there somebody else involved in doing the paperwork for the employees, stuff like that, or, didn't we talk, it seems like that came.
So there's, there's a lot of element too with the open enrollment, the diff, the different feeds that go into it. So from an employee perspective, it, this should be fairly seamless and blind, there's gonna be some nuanced changes as far as the plant enrichment itself and able to get a lot more robust program. Um, especially some of the technology, hopeful that we'll be able to bring to some of the things, but on, on the, but on the fully funded side, i- it, it wouldn't be any real significant change, at least from the employee experience, uh, aside from just being able to bring in um, a lot of the technology and different changes that way.
Can I make a suggestion? With all the questions that have come tonight, I hope everybody sees that we should have been talking about this a lot sooner. I mean, this is a big deal, it's a lot of money. Uh, we're, we're making a decision for our employees. And, and I know y'all, it, it, that's, that's the interest is trying to help our employees, but this is complicated. I got a business degree, but I don't have one in insurance. So I would just hope we, the next, and there'll be another issue, if we really need to cover this a couple times in support session, instead of wait to the last second. You know, and I, you know, my background, I look at, maybe other people don't, but if you got a consultant and they're also player in the bids, me, I wanna get criticized, that's a good way to do it. But I, but I do think we really need to spend more time on these big, big-ticket things, so we knock out the confusion as possible. Honest in what is worth.
Well, even if you don't decide to, only wanna address the self-funded portion of that, we need to get to transparency in the fee structure. That we, it's gotta be whoever it is working directly for the county.
You know what I like.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I honestly, I, I try to, to, to stay to that side as best, you know, you make mistakes sometimes, but I, but I think just from the understanding insurance, what, how multifaceted that is, I would, I would strongly urge us, the next thing that we get into, we spend as much time as we gotta spend, even if it's six months out,
So with that being said, um, what's on the table then is to, are we going, oh, I mean, the vote that we're going to move forward with, with, I'm assuming everybody said MFP. That's what's on the, that's what's on the table right now, is to decide that we're gonna move forward with, with the second choice? Is that something Chuck, you wanted to, we?
No, I'm, I'm more, I'm not asking that. I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm gonna be upfront with you, because this is not a zone, and I'll go ahead and tell you, I'm not gonna support this. I don't like the, the issue, the, and I, and this is not personal, it's just the way I operate, it's, I think we should have spent more time discussing. I think that even the fact that we came in, and you're gonna give this role to the, to the guy that was, or the company that was doing the consulting, I just think he asked me, so. So, y'all, y'all do whatever, but that's kinda where I am. And I ended up, or, I see a lot of questions. If I'm wrong, then he wouldn't have been asking a bunch of questions. You, and you wouldn't have been asking questions. And, you know, I, I think on something this big, by the time we get here, that's, the question's over, for the most part.
Yeah, and I was going to, when I was going, I was gonna continue and say, it's either that or we don't do anything with it tonight. But how is that going to affect going forward? That's all I'm, I wanted to make sure that if we don't do anything tonight, how's that gonna affect going forward? I mean, is that gonna, is it gonna put us in a moribund, or do we, do we? I'm just asking the question, where, where would that put us? If we decide not to do anything tonight?
In my opinion, that would leave us with our existing broker on a commission basis continuing with fully insured for whatever renewal period able to be negotiated there. Whether that would be one year or six months.
Will this affect our, um, current staff levels if we make a change? Well, we need more employees, I guess.
No additional employees.
I would suggest you just call, call for a motion, and see where it is. And whatever happens, happens, and we go something else, whatever.
John, how long can it be that they keep talking about it, just because I don't know much?
Probably four months.
How many long?
Six, five? Five.
All, all, in, all employees under the interest?
Oh, absolutely. Well, I'm, I'm just making a motion that we table the uh, the uh, vote until at such time the co, commissioners have all had their questions answered and they're prepared to make an informed decision.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? I'll, I'll second it. Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Airboats? No to the paper. We got three, two, motion dies.
Now we know something, so if somebody makes a vote.
There you go.
I'm just trying to get this logjam broke here because, you know, Mr. Thomas may have to go to a victory party here in a little bit. Hopefully.
Is there another motion on the table? I think we're ready to move to the next item. Alright, so the next item is discuss and consider amendments to the sewer policy as related to CCRC, Daniel.
Uh, no changes since we talked about this uh, last week. Um, the changes in the policy from the previous policy that was adopted in 1920, excuse me, in 2020, was uh,
In late.
I don't think we had sewer in 1920. Are that, uh, we've updated the definitions so that now we're referring to a life plan community instead of a CCRC. And the one substantive change, I would say, is that we would amend the policy as proposed to allow a life plan community to be in multiple locations, as long as it's operated by a single operator and as a single community with shared facility. So you could have two or three satellites even, as long as they're all operating under the same umbrella. Um, you've got the restriction that um, at any given sewer capacity plant, not more than 30% of the capacity can be allocated to residential use, and of that 30%, not more than, well, and then no more than 16% can be allocated to life plan communities or assisted living.
Any questions for Daniel on this item? Do we have any public comment? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we accept amendments to the sewer policy as related to the CCRD.
Okay.
We got a motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Uh, let's see, the next item is discuss and consider the grant of sanitary sewer easement off Jimmy Daniel Road. Daniel?
Um, this is the sewer line that would run behind the, um, the um, uh, fire station, would get, give access to a couple of uh, uh, new customers um, that can't otherwise get to the sewer plant. Um, there's a, there's a drawing in your packet and copies of both, both easements. Uh, one private individual has also got a granted easement, I understand they've, they have agreed to that.
Any questions for Daniel on this side? Any public comment? Alright, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we grant, of the granting of sanitary sewer easement off Jimmy Daniels Road.
Second.
A motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Now we're here to discuss the, and consider FY26 law enforcement vehicles, Melissa?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, so yes, we are in current fiscal year FY25, for which we don't have a budget for law enforcement vehicles by design. Um, annually, we allocate a budget towards this, however, the sheriff's office has been requesting funding early. Um, so while we did not put this in the FY25 budget, they moved forward to go ahead and reserve their FY26 vehicles, because it takes that long to get the new vehicles ordered. Um, and what they found was that there were old new stock on the lot of 23 and 24 vehicles. That would result in a cost savings for them, as opposed to ordering vehicles and receiving those next year. So the request for your consideration is a, a budget amendment not to exceed $387,500 uh, funded through SPOST, to purchase six vehicles and the related equipment in the current fiscal year. Um, and we're requesting that budget amendment um, for the life of the contracts until the purchases are complete.
Any questions? Just wanna thank Chief Deputy Wazin about there. Um, he does a great job with these vehicles and, and looking after the county's money, so Jeremy, thank you a lot, appreciate all that. Do we have any public comment? Well, that's, what, I'll get, we'll have to get where you have, this is on the, uh, do you have any comment on the law enforcement vehicles?
Yeah.
Okay, no problem. Alright, we'll entertain a motion.
I think a motion, we approve the FY26 law enforcement vehicles as submitted.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Thank you. Does any commissioner wish any item to be, come off the consent agenda? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve consent items as submitted. Second.
We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Commissioner Sax?
Motion is adjourned.
Second. Alright, we are adjourned, thank you.
Comment about that commissions would stay the same after the renewal? Um, we're ready to extend that same contract off.